Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
This is March 18th, 2021, and I am officially calling the meeting of the Select Board to order at 6:30 PM. Then the first order of business is to elect the Chair for the next year.
I make a motion to...
Do I have a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to appoint Cheryl Mayberry as Chair of the Select Board for the 2021 year.
Second that motion.
Well, I guess all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Aye. It's all yours Cheryl.
So, I'd like to call the Select Board meeting to order. And thank you Regina for taking care of the immediate business. So, we're gonna start, I guess with our guests. So, in our audience, I guess we should acknowledge, we have Ray Boaz, resident of Walpole, Mike Rowell, our road agent, and Fact TV. And Regina Borden is our Recording Secretary. Sarah Downing is our Administrator, our Board Administrator. I'm not even sure what is that?
Manager of Administration.
Okay, thank you. And our Select Board members Steve DeLazio and Peggy Puscher, and of course myself Cheryl Mayberry. So, we're gonna go ahead and start with our guests. So, old business, the granite curbing on Elm Street. So, Ray, when we initially talked about the curbing, you had indicated that you were interested in purchasing either replacement curbing or curbing for in front of your home. And that you had indicated that you had neighbors. You had also had discussions with your neighbors.
Yes, as I proposed three years ago, and I had talked with my and your immediate neighbors, the church between the Town Hall and my house. I said to them, and they said that I was going, that I would pay for the granite in front of the church also, down to my driveway. That never came to being because Jim just ran out of time for installation. That was three years ago, four years ago. At any rate, with the work that's gonna be done on Elm Street this coming year, it seems like a great target of opportunity since the street's gonna be dug up anyway. I've communicated with the neighbors south of me, which are both new residents in town. There is interest in joining in with me. I don't have any commitments. Pretty much they're waiting to see what the town's interest is in doing this. There's a great deal of unevenness along the roadway in front of the church in my home. The house directly south of me is... People park on the town property, it's a big mud hole. It's unsightly and probably to some degree not safe. And as you're probably aware, there's a great deal of work being done on the Front Felder's previous residence by the new owners, who are really making a big effort to enhance how the place looks. So, I still would be willing to purchase the granite curbing from where it ends at the Town Hall, south to my drive. And with a favorable interest on behalf of the Select Board, I'll do my best to see if my neighbors will join in and continue on down, which basically would take us all the way to the south end of the Common.
We're gonna hear from Mike Rowell regarding the granite curbing. Mike?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, I think it was five years ago we talked about it, Ray. Because I've been here five years now.
Yeah, I think it was 2015, Mike.
Yep. So, when we discussed it with the Select Board, we went over the fact that having the granite curbing for us is more of a nuisance. It's more for aesthetics. Doesn't make the road any safer for us. It actually damages more plow equipment. And being that that road is as narrow as it is right now, with the parking problems we have downtown, if we were to put the curbing there, it would push the, obviously out in front of the church, there's already some curbing, but it would push down further. And we basically have a one-lane road when we have people park from the church down. So, my idea, and we have to do a project plan here, is that road needs to be widened a little bit to allow for better parking. And if we were to put the granite curbing in, I would suggest that we would widen the road at least eight feet. So, it would take up, you know, a good portion of that green section in between the road and the sidewalk to allow for better parking, to plan for, you know, 15, 20 years down the road, instead of, you know, just planning for what we have to do for this year. I think we need to look at the fact that this isn't the quiet little town that everybody loves and wants to keep that way. I think we need to be realistic and say, the town's growing. We want to keep the aesthetics the same, but yet allow for a little bit, you know, better, you know, construction-wise down the road. So, we're not building something that this road could last us 15, 20 years without doing anything to it. And I have a feeling if we don't widen it, if we put the curbing in, we don't widen it, we're just gonna run into a further, you know, parking issue, safety with, you know, fire and police trying to get down the road. So, that's my thing on it. I'm not against it. I just know what it can do to our equipment in the long run. It doesn't help us in any way. It just, it looks good. I do agree it looks better. But there's another type of curbing we could do too. It's a paved curbing. It's a Cape, they call it a Cape Cod curb, which would allow, you know, people not to be able to drive over into the mud area. And it would also allow our plow equipment, when it does hit that, it rides up over onto the top of it, instead of like stopping us dead. Because it does wear out the edges of the wings quicker downtown. So, stuff like that, that's what I'm concerned with. So, I mean, that's my idea of it with the widening part. I don't know if you're in favor of that or not, but it's...
Well, I've noticed, Mike, in many places, both in town here and in North Walpole, where there is granite, and I'm not familiar with the other type of curbing, where they begin, it's like an angle. So, that I would imagine then if a plow is in the wrong spot, it would, you know, raise up on top and at least not nick up your plow. I think, I've said this to the Select Board in the past, and Sarah, if anybody knows what's going on in the Common, it's me. Because I'm right here and I'm always in the right place at the wrong time or the wrong place at the right time. I've been here 19 years. The really tough spot on Elm Street is where the angle parking is at the Town Hall.
Yep.
When directly in front of the church and going south with the parallel parking, two cars can get by. If a stranger starts going south on Elm Street and I'm going north, they will look at me like I'm going the wrong way on a one-way street.
Yep.
So, I don't know. I don't, I don't know from my experience, and you know roads and the specifications and so forth. I don't know that eight feet would be the additional needed. And of course, curbing is really more in the tree lawn than it would be in the street. You know, three or four feet, even just three feet from the Town Hall down, you know, going west to avoid the Common, that might be an idea to make it a little bit wider, if you know what I mean. But there still comes back the issue, what do we do in front of the Town Hall? I mean, I will come home and there'll be some big rigs in there sometimes. And... So, maybe this is an opportunity, and Peggy's got her hand up, so I'll be quiet, to really address all the way down from Westminster Street down.
Yeah, that was my initial. Like I said, I've been talking to the Select Board a little bit about that. We haven't done a site visit on it. But my idea is to take out all the granite that's there, move the little green space in between the sidewalk and the granite then on the angle parking, and have it go right up against the sidewalk with the paved curbing. And try and eliminate that little, add a little bit more room on the end where Westminster Street connects.
Yes.
To allow those vehicles to pull in further. But also Peggy knows this more than most. You know, when the cars do pull in, they're ripping their bumpers and scraping them on the granite. So, these curbs would be lower. So, when the cars do pull in, if they pull in too far, they wouldn't be damaging the cars too. And it would allow for easier cleanup of the sidewalk and the street. So, that way, when people are walking, they're not walking out in the road down towards the church. They can just do a seamless, you know, walk from their car into the sidewalk, instead of having that little bit of snow that's always piled up from the edge of the...
You're walking alongside the Town Hall there, Mike.
Yep, yep.
What about the trees that we've got going down on the west side?
So, most of the trees that are in front of the Town Hall are dying. So, I mean, that's an issue. There's the one, I know there's one good tree in front of the church. So, with the road being ripped up as it is and putting the drainage in, I'm not sure that we're not gonna disturb those where they're gonna probably eventually die quicker than they are now. I know a lot of the ones on the Common are probably gonna get hit harder, but most of those are, they should be chopped down anyways because they've just been, you know, trimmed too much in the middle and stuff. So, a lot of those are basically dead. They're just there.
You may recall about two or three years ago, my neighbors directly south of me requested permission to put in two trees. And I tied in and I put one in also. Mine, I put in line with the church's tree, which is, you know, further west. And then they did on theirs. If you were to widen the road, my tree root system would probably be all right. I totally agree with the perfect opportunity to do things right. We just have to figure out what the right thing to do is.
Yep.
Are we gonna let Peggy weigh in on this?
Okay.
I'm hearing lots of good comments and observations about the things as they exist down there currently. And I agree, the road needs to be widened. But what I would like to see before we start making piecemeal decisions is a comprehensive plan of what is expected will happen this summer that we can all agree on. Mark Houghton will be very much involved in this because he's, we'll tear up the road, but then he goes to work. The whole drainage system has to be redone. It's our opportunity to widen the road, to change things in front of Town Hall, where frankly, it's dangerous as people pull out of those parking spaces there when someone is right on your bumper all the time, coming around the corner, because people don't pay a whole lot of attention. Fortunately, there've never been any accidents. But I would rather, before we start making this bit, a little bit here and a little bit there, we'd like to see a whole plan of what's going to happen down there this summer. And I also am concerned about our stopping short when we put in new curbing, that we run down just two or three houses and then we quit. So, that's what I'm talking about. I'd like to see a more comprehensive plan.
In conjunction with a comprehensive plan, you may recall a year ago, I wrote some articles about trees. We lost some trees in front of the library. My proposal, and I forget who agreed on this, but the whole idea was to dedicate a new tree in front of the library at the right place in conjunction with Old Home Day. Mike, if you're indicating, and yes, I can look out the window and show you which trees, I mean, you can see, there's doorway to the Common. We've got trees that are a mess. Part of this whole plan is that when you're done, we need to look at, maybe some trees should come out now, but we need to replace tree for tree at a minimum for our future generations.
Yeah, I would, I would, sorry. I would agree, we need to replace trees. I wouldn't say all of them. I think there, some of them are too close together as it is, and that's why they're not doing as well. Especially, well, we need to look at what type of trees. Because the ones that go under the power lines, obviously are always gonna be butchered.
Yeah, I think what Ray is implying, Mike, is that taking a tree down in the Common is okay as long as we plant another tree somewhere else.
Well, I see.
But doing it right, Steve.
Yeah.
Mike is totally right.
Yeah.
There's trees that shouldn't be put there, and there's trees that should be put there.
Right, and the right kind of trees.
Exactly.
I totally agree.
Whatever reasons. So, this whole idea of, as Peggy's saying, looking at this as an all-encompassing project, I'm all for. And I also hear from what Peggy's saying is that whatever curbing is the ideal curbing, it would run all the way down to the south end of the Common.
We don't want to see it broken up into little pieces.
Yep.
There was an arborist whom the Hooper Institute had on the Common before we all got caught in this virus. And that woman observed as we walked around the Common and told us that the majority of those trees were dead or dying. And they weren't gonna last very long, and that we needed to have a better plan for replacing them.
I think Helen brought that woman in, didn't she?
Yeah, the Hooper Institute, right.
So, it sounds like we need a plan from Mike about what he sees happening in, on Elm Street. And then, I guess, do we need to take that step first and make a decision on the curbing before we ask the rest of Ray's neighbors about, you know, to keep it continuous? Or what are your thoughts on that?
I think we gotta bring Mark Houghton into this.
Absolutely.
And we should probably have, I don't know, call it a pre-planning meeting or together, so that we can get all the details worked out. And so, these guys can go get the right surveys and the right things that need to be done.
I have kept Mark in the loop on all this about my ideas. So, we just haven't gone to it for a site plan, you know, visit.
Mike, is this concrete then or some sort of other substance?
It's a paved, so it'll be black. If you go...
You're talking blacktop then?
Yep, blacktop. It'll be the same as the pavement on the road. It's a different type of pavement, but it'll look the same. If you go up to the end of, or the beginning of Old Keene Road, where we paved in from South Street up to Old Keene Road, there's a slight section of curbing that we did up there. That's, they call it a Cape Cod curb.
Isn't that more susceptible to getting nicked by a plow?
It can be, but it's easier to repair. So, we could go in, cut a small section out if we had to, or just patch it with hot top itself. If you go on Maple Street in North Walpole, you can see there, that's been there for a winter now. And that came out really nice. That has all Cape Cod curb with paved sidewalks.
So, basically, that's done with the final paving process, I would imagine. So, then it sounds like my offer to purchase granite curbing, if you went that route, becomes moot.
Yes, because at that point, what, so the granite curbing, the cheapest part of the granite is the granite. It costs about $125 a foot to install it. Whereas the asphalt's, you know, half that. So, I mean, at that point, you know, we would just pay for it all and continue. And I would continue all the way down to the end of the Common.
Well, I really appreciate being included and being able to share. And again, I have almost 19 years sitting here and knowing everything that's going on out there. Parking in front of the Town Hall is a problem. I see that all the time. People, it's danger, if you're parked next to a truck, it's dangerous backing out, and somebody can easily get clipped. So, that should be solved. And I don't know that you need to go eight feet wide in front of my initial, eight feet in front of my house and further south and the church.
Yep.
Three feet would certainly make a big difference with parallel parking for two cars and to pass, one going north, one going south.
So, there is a standard for a parking area. I can't tell you the measurements off the top of my head. But if you go look at all the ones on, that we painted on Westminster Street, those are all regulation. They have to be so long and so wide. So, we can't narrow them up if we're gonna actually make real parking spaces. We can't go smaller than that because that's the standard.
Okay, because if you took eight feet from...
And that's just a guesstimation. So, don't, you know, it could be six. But I'm just, in my head, I'm guesstimating.
Perhaps we should wait, Ray, on that, just seeing what, how the plan comes out.
That's fine, because eight feet puts you almost all the way up to the sidewalk here.
Yep.
And takes out the tree that I planted for the future.
Okay, so...
But even in that area, Mike, we can clip the Common back a little bit to widen on that side. Once you get down past the parking on Town Hall.
Yep.
You can open, you could take, because the trees along that Common, right now, most of those are almost dead.
Yeah, and they're not gonna fare well when we dig into the Common either, so...
No, no.
So, that's an option. We can take a little from one side and a little from the other.
Exactly what I was gonna say, Mike. I mean, looking at it that way, if you lose too much of the tree lawn on the west side, I don't think it would look as nice as it does now. We could lose some of it. If you lost three to four feet on the Common side, I don't think it would make that much difference, but it would certainly be much safer for drivers.
Yep.
So, what are the next steps? Is this, I know Mike said he's working with Mark. And Steve, I heard you mention like a sort of a pre-planning meeting, so...
Well, it's nice to get, it's nice to get, you know, Mark and Mike in the room together and just see what the, all the thoughts are and what the plan is to do it.
Do we want them to develop that plan and bring it back to a Select Board meeting? Or do you want to have a work session to have, to discuss it, or...
I would suggest that, that we have a comprehensive plan that deals with the size of the road. Mark remarks inform us exactly what he's gonna be doing in that road and on that Common, that we talk about trees, that we talk about the curbing, all of those things.
Yeah.
And because we have to have a public meeting before this ever begins. So, we should know now what that plan is that's gonna be presented to the rest of the community.
Yep. So, Mike, where are you at as far as getting a plan to present?
I still, I have to, I'll have to meet with Mark. We've been talking on the phone. We haven't, we've been waiting for better weather to kind of get down there and for the snow to melt. So, I'm thinking next week looks pretty good to have me and Mark just do a walkthrough. I also have a couple contractors that are interested in the job, so I can get them down there and get their point of view. So, I mean, if you give me a couple weeks, we can probably get something preliminary that gives a better idea. And then we can, you know, adjust it from there with the Select Board. If we meet with you, you know, do it, you know, managers and Select Board first, and then invite the public once we have a good, solid plan.
I would certainly be happy to at least be there because, as I said, if anybody knows what happens on the street, it's me, Mike.
Yep.
So, do we want them to come back in a couple weeks to a Select Board meeting? Or what are your thoughts?
I would say give me a couple weeks to bring you guys something. And then maybe, then you guys can talk about it with just us to see if you guys want to change anything. And then have a public meeting about it. I think that would work.
Okay, so you're thinking by April 1st?
Let me check the calendar here. So, yeah, that would be perfect. April 1st is the first Thursday, so...
Yep, and it's two weeks today.
Yep, that would be fine.
Okay, so we'll expect...
No April Fools that day.
Yeah, bring two plans, Mike.
Yeah.
The fun plan and the real plan.
We'll just pave the whole Common and be done with it.
You gave away your secret too soon. Okay, thank you. Any additional comments?
April issue.
Oh, yes. So, any other comments before we move on?
I'd just like to be involved along the way.
Yes, we will involve you, Ray.
Just, I'm not gonna be antagonistic, as you can tell. I just want to be able to provide my observations.
Yes, thank you. We appreciate that. And thank you for participating today. And Mike, thank you for calling in and weighing in on this. So, we'll expect to see you or your plan in two weeks, okay?
All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
How to get ahold of me if you want me.
Yep, I do.
Thank you.
Great, you're in.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
Bye-bye.
All right, thanks. All right, bye-bye. Ray, you can feel free to stay on and listen if you like.
There was something else on the agenda that was curious, so I'll hang on for a little while.
Okay.
Thank you, Cheryl.
You're welcome. So, would you like to move back to the agenda and accounts payable?
I move accounts payable check register.
You good, Steve?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
I move the Select Board approve the accounts payable check register in the total amount of $115,776.70 for checks issued 3/19/2021. This amount includes two capital reserve fund payments and payments to the social service agencies, which were approved in Saturday's budget.
Second.
There's... Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, Steve DeLazio?
Aye.
Peggy Puscher?
Aye.
And I, Cheryl Mayberry. So, motion carried. So, moving on to payroll?
I move the payroll register be approved totaling $31,113.49 dated March 19th, 2021, and the 941 payroll tax transfer of $5,610.17.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Peggy Puscher?
Aye.
Steve DeLazio?
Aye.
And Cheryl Mayberry, aye. Moving on to the Select Board meeting minutes?
I was not here last week, so I really can't...
I make a motion to accept the Select Board minutes of March 11th, 2021.
And I second. Any further discussion on the minutes? Not, all those in favor, Steve DeLazio?
Aye.
Cheryl Mayberry, aye.
I make a motion to accept the non-public Select Board session minutes of March 11th, 2021, and they shall remain sealed.
Second. Any discussion of those minutes? Saying none, all those in favor, Steve DeLazio?
Aye.
Cheryl Mayberry, aye. And Carrie, the minutes are approved and sealed for the non-public session.
We have two committee reports to be acknowledged. The North Walpole Village District Commissioners Meeting of March 2nd, 2021, and the Planning Board meeting minutes from March 9th, 2021. and the Planning Board Meeting Minutes from March ninth, twenty twenty-one.
Minutes are so, are the reports are so acknowledged. Um, moving on to the warrants.
I move that we approve the re-committal warrant for twenty twenty for the amount of six hundred, thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-four cents.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Steve DeLassio?
Uh, this is a discussion point.
Yeah.
This is the first time we've done this?
It was something brought forth by the auditor, was it not, Sarah?
Yes.
Yes, it's because the tax collector has changed. And now you have to move, and this happened when the North Wallpole tax collector moved to Sandy Smith. You did these.
Alright.
The same action.
Okay.
I have just lost you all. Can you still hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Luckily you've all disappeared. I'll work on it later, but right now I can, if you hear me, that's enough.
I see you too, Peg.
Yeah, we can see you.
I can't see anybody. I see the Adobe flash thing in front of my eyes.
Okay, let's get, alright, so ready to vote?
We've moved in second in the remedial warrant. Um, and then you wanted to, you, motion second, I believe, and you wanted to discuss it. So, uh, we'll vote, I guess. Maybe we need to, okay, so all those in favor, Steve DeLassio?
Aye.
Peggy Pashir?
Aye.
And aye, Cheryl Mayberry. Next one.
Want me to go ahead there? Three more.
Yeah.
I move the re-committal warrant for twenty twenty tax lien for the amount of seventy-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty-three cents be approved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Peggy Pashir?
Aye.
Steve DeLassio?
Aye.
And Cheryl Mayberry, aye. So the lien is approved for twenty twenty.
I move the re-committal warrant for the twenty nineteen tax liens for the amount of thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-six cents be approved pending the correction of a typographical error in that warrant.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in seconded. Any additional discussion? I'm going to assume that if the, the written percentage is correct, then the total's correct. Is that your understanding, Sarah?
That was my understanding when I.
We're actually thinking the writ, written percentage is wrong and that the, the numeric number is right.
Okay, so it's the fourteen, about fourteen percent, you're saying. So is this dollar amount based on that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Peggy. Okay, so, um, all those in favor to approve the twenty nineteen tax liens? Uh, Steve DeLassio?
Aye.
Peggy Pashir?
Aye.
Cheryl Mayberry, aye. And the twenty nineteen tax liens are approved.
I move the re-committal warrant for the two hun, two thousand eighteen tax liens for the amount of two thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-one cents be approved.
Second.
Any, any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, say aye. Steve DeLassio?
Aye.
Peggy Pashir?
Aye.
The two hundred, the twenty eighteen tax liens have been approved. So we'll move on to abatements?
I move that the abatement at requested for map and lot, uh, map twelve, lot nineteen, sub lot two be denied. The application was not signed as it is required by the RSA.
Steve?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor say of denying the uh, the abatement requested on map twelve, lot nineteen, sub lot two, say aye. Peggy Pashir?
Aye.
Steve DeLassio? And Cheryl Mayberry, aye. Okay, moving on to building permits.
I move that the building permit for twenty twenty dash ten map eighteen, lot eighteen, sub lot zero be renewed. It's a construction of a breezeway which is now every, the lot, the permit is only good for a year and they are renewing it because they haven't completed the work.
Second.
Okay. The renewal of twenty twenty dash ten building permit has been moved in seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Steve DeLassio? Peggy Pashir?
Aye.
Cheryl Mayberry, aye. And the motion is carried.
I might approve the next building permit twenty twenty-one dash eleven which is map eight, lot eighty-eight, sub lot two, to build a twenty-six by twenty-eight addition to the home.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Steve DeLassio?
Aye.
Peggy Pashir?
Aye.
And Cheryl Mayberry, aye. The approval for building permit twenty twenty-one dash eleven is approved. So moving on to old business, uh, we already talked about the granite state curbing. And next is the south end of the common as a staging area. Who wants to talk about that?
Um, I received a request from E. Houghton that for the Elm Street project that the south end of the common be, may be allowed to use it as a staging area. And they will, sorry, and they will, uh, uh, reseed it and do everything that's necessary to restore it.
That's great. Any questions, Peggy, or?
Oh, it sounds fine to me. I don't have any trouble with it.
Okay, so, sounds like you can go ahead and let them know that.
Yeah, they just want, they wanted it in the minutes of the meeting.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, moving on to the North Wallpole Library lease. And Peggy, you're going to give us an update?
Yes, I am. Uh, when Jeremy sent the lease to me, I discovered that he attributed the ownership of the building to the wrong people. And so we clarified that and he is redoing the lease. I should have it tomorrow, I would assume. It should have been a very simple change.
Okay. That's great. So we can look at that and sign it for next week.
Well, I want to give it to the library people to look at too, because.
Oh, you're right. Oh, okay, yes.
We're living up to that lease.
Right, and uh, are we sending a copy to North Wallpole as well?
Yes.
Okay.
But I wanted to be sure it's correct.
Okay, so after you take a look, I mean, I'm happy to go to their meeting next week and discuss it with them or answer any questions that they have. Just let me know.
It's a pretty standard lease. There's nothing unusual about it, really.
Right. Okay, good. Um, moving on, we have the town hall exterior painting purchase order. So it is in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars, which includes a four-week lift rental. So you're asking us to sign that purchase order, Sarah?
Yes, yes, it was approved as part of the Warren article.
Okay.
I move we sign the painting purchase order.
Second.
Hey. So, um, been moved in seconded to sign the painting purchase order in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars? Any further discussion?
Just make sure, Sarah, on the purchase order, it lists the Warren article.
It does.
Or, who's the purchase order to?
Oh, Catamount.
Catamount.
Painting or what is it? What is the business name?
Ca, Catamount.
Alright, just Catamount.
Catamount Painting. I have it here somewhere.
May I ask a question here?
Alright, go ahead.
Um, did you resolve the access to the west side?
We're currently having it surveyed. The property lines re-surveyed, so I don't think we have the results of that, or I don't even know if it's been done yet, but we did request to have the property surveyed.
Okay, that really doesn't answer the question, but I understand that's the first step. I did see surveyors out there, um, a couple of weeks ago, at any rate.
So what is, well, I think we needed to identify, uh, the property lines before we could consider any further work.
Well, I just hope you have acts, good access to that side.
We, we hope so too. So, but yeah, we wanted, we need to get that cleared up first, avoid any additional potential problems.
Understand. Thank you, Cheryl.
Okay, so next, moving on, um, oh no, we moved in seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Peggy?
Aye.
Aye.
And Steve DeLassio says aye and Cheryl Mayberry says aye. So it is moved and carried to sign the purchase order for the painting of the town hall. Moving on to the second floor ceiling of the town hall restoration purchase order in the amount of fifteen thousand, nine hundred dollars for repair and painting of the ceiling.
I hope that we sign this. Isn't it also with Catamount?
Yes. Catamount Painting.
Thank you. And you, Steve, did you say something?
Yeah, I just want to make sure or clarify. Does that include the work that has to happen, I'll call it, behind the curtain?
Yes.
Okay.
The wall, there's a wall repair they're going to throw in.
Yep, second.
All those in favor of signing the purchase order for the second floor ceiling restoration, please signify by saying aye. Peggy Pashir?
Aye.
Steve DeLassio?
Aye.
And Cheryl Mayberry, aye. It has been moved and carried. And finally, on old business reservoir dam repairs.
We did receive the, we received the report, um, just late yesterday. Um, I haven't opened it up really to look at it too closely yet, and I'll just give it to Sarah so that it can be distributed to the appropriate people. Um, it's sort of like reading the, uh, the Brownfield reports. Quite, quite technical with lots of interesting maps.
Do they, did they provide any sort of summary?
They did. They provided a summary. It's in Fussin' O'Neill's opinion is that it's a high-hazard dam.
Right.
And they're going to come back now with various cost proposals.
Yeah, is this is, I assume that they discussed this with DES and they agree, or is this just from them to us at this point?
Um, they've submitted everything to DES. DES has not come back. But, um, it's so borderline.
Yeah.
That DES could prob, might be able to go both ways, but we're going to go on the side of caution and say it's a high-hazard dam.
Okay.
It's, it's so close to the line.
Okay. Alright, so we'll, uh, see that in our, we'll get that report.
Yeah, I'll, I'll really give it to Sarah tomorrow. And I'm going to ask that Sarah print mine out because it's, you know, like forty pages long or something like that.
Okay. Alright, any other further old business that you'd like to talk about? Or any updates?
I can tell you that I am, and you mentioned the Brownfield. I am now reading and reviewing the proposal uh, that we're about to send out next week to solicit contractors and the abbreviated version is three hundred and forty pages.
Wow. That's a heavy reading.
Certainly puts you to sleep after a while.
That's what I like too. For a hydrologist or something like that, it might be interesting, but.
Oh, it's probably fun for everybody who deals in, in contaminated properties.
Yeah, right.
I'm learning something from it, but no, I will approve it. And, and, um, it will go, the DES then will put their stamp on it, Mike McCloskey, and we, on April twelfth, we will have potential bidders over here looking at the site and walking around before they actually submit a bid.
So are we still, um, are we still considering moving that to July? So we sort of have staggered work on it.
We have July, so we can get the other work done during May and June.
Okay. Right, perfect. Okay, so moving on to new business. The select board leaves own assignments and thank you, Steve, for sending a chart um, of the list of departments, so we could talk about who wants to do what.
You all came back. Oh, nice.
Yeah. Okay, so any preferences other than what's, does everybody agree with the names assigned to the list so far?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll just clarify on the project list.
Yeah.
Where it says Steve, the, for the police station, it's Steve and the police liaisons. And dams and bridges is Steve and the road liaisons. I'm just providing some technical.
Okay.
Input, and it's the same thing with Elm Street, Steve and the road liaisons, okay?
I want to stay with the police department. I just be.
Yep.
One to, um, develop the kind of rapport I want with, and we have a new chief coming in April first, so I would like, I request that you let me stay there.
Sounds good. Um, speaking of police, Peggy?
Yes.
Do we need to swear in Justin?
We probably should. I'll have him come to next week's meeting, or I can have him come on the first. Maybe.
Yeah, I'm just.
Appropriate.
Yeah, I didn't know if we have to do anything there, or is it just a?
Not sure, but I think that it would be a great ceremonial value.
Yeah, I do too.
Photo opportunity, please.
Yes, of course.
A photo op, is that what you just said?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, so. Any other? Go ahead, Peggy.
I'm perfectly willing to take on one of the others if you'd like. Since I'm not chairman, I, um, I'd be happy to work with the highway group if you'd like, or well, whatever you feel that would be best served. I'll be happy to do it.
You, you haven't done recycling yet, have you, Peggy?
Nope.
Or recreation. Have you done recreation?
No. No.
So lots of opportunities. Um. Do you have a preference, Peggy?
Sure, highway.
I, I wouldn't agree with that. I think you should split highway and police with two different liaisons.
I'd also want to do welfare because I'm still working with Janet on.
Yeah, yeah.
Unfinished business.
Right, so are you going to take that for the year or are you just going to finish your project?
No, I'll take it for the year. No, I'm not going to quit mid-year, no.
Well, when we had talked about it last time, you were going to, uh, complete some written document with Janet and then you were going to hand it over to me. That's the only reason I'm asking.
Do you want to take it? If you can have it. I want to finish the court work that's necessary, and I don't know when we'll get that finished.
Okay, well, we'll leave it in your hand, your capable hands until, uh, you know, you want to keep it for the year, that's great. Um, I think I'd like to do recycling again. Unless one of you wants to do it.
Nope.
Yeah, I could pick up highway. That's fine with me.
Okay.
I just don't think it's good that the two most major departments are under one liaison.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
So you want to do highway?
Yeah, I'll take it.
Not just one. I might corrupt them both.
I don't think you can corrupt anything, Peggy.
Hey, I would like to nominate Steve to do the tax collector town clerk if he's willing.
Who was that?
Uh, I, I would like Steve to consider doing the tax collector town clerk via his own position, and he hasn't nodded yes or no yet.
If somebody else picks up Hooper.
I was thinking that we all three needed to work with Hooper.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Okay.
I think, given our meetings, the last two meetings we've both all been to, I think we all need to work with Hooper.
I agree. I agree. So, so that means a yes to the.
I guess I'm stuck with trying to keep the tax collector's office together. Not stuck. I shouldn't say that.
Um, Peggy, would you like to do recreation?
Sure. Do they, when do they meet? I don't know. Sure. Do they, when do they meet? I don't know when they meet.
They meet quarterly.
Is that all?
Yes, well, they may, you know, once COVID breaks. I've been encouraging them. They weren't, they were meeting twice a year. So I put the, I added the requirement for them to try to meet at least quarterly and talk about things like the budget and planning, so.
Happy to do that. I used to run a swimming pool in my life.
Awesome.
In a row.
Maybe they, maybe it'll be important, you know, as things start to open up, maybe they would be able to meet more often. But I think because Craig is new, he's, he's, he's been using the, you know, the structure that we've had in place since Justin left of July.
Okay, sure.
Okay, so what's left? Oh, committees, conservation. Do you want to keep sharing that Peggy or?
Why not? Yes, why don't we? We can put, yes, the two of us can do that.
Okay, and then there is no RAP committee at this time, so I don't know if that's something we want to ask Ben to facilitate, or if we just want to kind of leave that open for now.
Yeah, I didn't know if, that's why there was question marks. I didn't know if they were still meeting.
They are not. I did ask Ben about that today. But I know he's got a whole new round of volunteers and stuff, and I told him that I just wanted to know the status today. I wasn't going to ask him to start making plans without discussing it with the two of you. So I think it's open, it's open for discussion at this point. Whether they're, you know, whether we should ask him to start, you know, to revamp that committee.
Under the Town Office renovation, I think all of us should be involved in that.
Okay. Okay, so we want to just leave the RAP for now? Do you want me to just have a conversation with Ben some more about it, or?
How long has it been since that group was active?
I think it's, I would say for sure, I know it was kind of petering out when Paul was there. So Ben's been there, what, two years now?
Yeah. The group was hanging out in part.
Yeah.
I used to get articles from the RAP committee for the Clarion ages ago. And they just, like you said, petered out. But Ben has been very good at providing me input each month.
Yep, okay. All right, so I think that's it.
Boy, we got an awful lot of stuff, don't we?
We do. We stay busy all the time. Okay, so.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, no, thank you for taking planning. I, when I first read the list, I thought I was on planning. And I thought, oh, no, I just don't have that time, so thank you. All right, so we're going to move on. In new business, we have a quote from True North for Internet, which is a separate broadband hookup, Sarah?
Correct.
So we're the purchase order, or it's a quote for just the installation, right? And then there's no fees after that?
It's actually for the Sonic Wall and some other hardware, actually, and the installation.
Okay, but there's no fee once, once this is.
Right, and once we're in, then there's no fee for the monthly fee. We will not have a monthly fee.
Well, the equipment is one thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty-four cents. The labor is two thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars. And there's a shipping cost involved, so the total for True North is four thousand thirty-six dollars and fifty-four cents.
Okay. And so is, do you have a purchase order, Sarah, for that?
I do. Oh, I actually didn't, it's a quote that needs to be signed, but I can put a purchase order with it. I didn't yet. I should do that.
It only needs one signature from what I'm looking at.
I think I need a board approval and I sign it. And then I'll make the purchase order and you all can sign the purchase order over the weekend.
So.
So I think we approve the True North quote for the Select Board Office Internet for the separate broadband hoop-up for the Select Board Office.
I got a question, Sarah. That Sonic Wall isn't for the Select Board Office, it's for the Town Clerk's office, isn't it?
Uh, yeah, although they called it us, but it really is for the other office, because we have our own Sonic Wall over here.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
This is the hook, this is really, this is really to hook up
For the other office.
Clerk's office to the broadband, because they also need, by splitting the service, we need to have another Sonic Wall. And they also have to have a different type of connection to meet up with the DMV computers.
Okay.
So it's just from a cost accounting standpoint, it really should go to the Town Clerk's office.
Right.
That's true, it should.
All right, so.
So I am, I move that we approve this and authorize Sarah to sign it, since it's got her name on it.
Okay, is there a second?
There's a second.
Any further discussion, Bill? So all those in favor, please say aye. Peggy?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Cheryl, I'm sorry. I have to, you're a little bit slower than Peggy. You'll train me.
I will. Okay, so we have Peggy has said aye, Steve has said aye, Cheryl says aye. And it is moved, is approved to have Sarah sign the quote for True North in the amount of four thousand thirty-six dollars and fifty-four cents. Next is New Hampshire Retirement Certification Forms. You just need what, Sarah, for us to sign them?
Just to sign them so I can put them with their, their enrollment forms. It's required for police.
I move that we have a sign, agree to sign the retirement forms for two different police officers, Police Officer eighteen and Police Officer nineteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Steve DeLassio.
Aye.
Peggy Pashir.
Aye.
And Cheryl Mayberry, aye. Motion carries. And we'll go in and sign those this weekend. Next is the Mill Pond Dam Inspection. I did see the letter. Did you all see the letter that came?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we should ask them to notify us, Sarah, when the dam inspection's going to be.
I, I think they want to call to see when's a good time.
So is that something we should have Mark do, or?
I wasn't sure who should call.
It's really Mike Rao.
Mike Rao, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so Sarah, if you can send that to Mike Rao and ask him to contact them to schedule an appointment. And then let us know when they've agreed on a date and time, just in case anybody wants to take part. Okay?
Yep.
All right, moving on. Community power. We've got a, what, do we get a call? Yeah, we got a call from someone, a selectman from Harrisville to see if we wanted to form a committee about community powers. That's a consolidation of a power resource by small towns, right? So that there's more buying power for services.
And I think there's also, my impression was it had more of a renewable, like solar aspect. You could tweak your power to maybe be more sustainable and get a better rate.
Now, did he, he or she, did they offer to send you any information on this?
I think there's an event coming up, and so they wanted to see if anyone in the Select Board wanted to participate.
I think we got something on this some months ago, maybe even a year ago. And at the time, as I recall, we all felt frankly, we had enough projects on our plate right now that we were not able to take on another big one.
I think we talked about that. I agree.
Okay, so it sounds like the feeling is the same as before, that not at this time.
Paul Looney, is that his last name?
Yes.
Paul had expressed interest to me very casually about maybe he would like to be interested in a community power type project. So if we'd like to approach him, maybe he might be wanting to do, sit on the committee or whatever.
Do the event that Sarah was talking about, just see what it's all about.
Yeah.
And then he could share that with us.
Right, I don't know what his availability is. Now, I heard he was retiring, but.
I don't know, I haven't heard that, but you know, he chaired our broadband, still chairs.
Right.
Band Committee, so perhaps if he's retiring, he'll have more, more time. But he could tell us what's going to be required, because if, if a person has to staff the committee, that's where we run into difficulty. We just gave ourselves a whole lot of work to do.
Yeah, like I said, I'm, I'm in favor of, just like we're doing with Steve Grenier on the, on the streetlights, Peg?
Right, yeah.
I was unhappy with Paul, if he wanted to take this on.
He's very thorough. He's
Yep.
he's great to work with.
Yep.
Are you interested in reaching out to him, or would you like Sarah to reach out to him?
Who did he reach out to?
Well, to give him the
It was a conversation at the recycle center with him one day. It wasn't anything. It just, I had asked him about, oh, now that you're done with the broadband, what else can you do for the community? And he's, and then he sent me an email that he'd be interested in, if the community was interested in a renewable energy project.
Well, Sarah, I'll certainly, since I know him well, I'll be happy to email him. But you'll have to send me that information, because I don't think I kept it.
Okay.
Thank you, Peggy.
You're welcome.
And Steve, who don't you talk to at recycling?
I like recycling centers, like
I know.
It's the hub of the community there.
It is definitely the information hub I see there. Moving on to the great Hydro River Stewart presentation. All right, so the question is, are we interested in seeing the presentation or joining?
Or joining maybe the Conservation Commission and doing a joint viewing there? Because I think Alicia, Alicia Flamie was very interested in having the presentation to that group.
Why don't we let her do that?
They could do it at a conservation meeting and she could just join. I'm sure Peggy and I usually do anyway.
I would rather do that.
Okay, so it sounds like we're interested, we're interested in seeing it if they want to do it and scheduling it according to the Conservation Committee's meeting schedule. Okay. And last on our list for new business is the oath of office. So tell me a little bit more about that. We need to sign something, or?
Yes, for our new officer, Joshua Perro has to sign, which I think all police officers do, an oath of office. And then the Select Board needs to sign it, and then Joshua will do his oath. And actually Janet, oh, she's the JP, Justice of the Peace, will swear him in at the police station. And Megan will record it. The town clerk will record it.
Okay, so we can take care of that.
We just move to accept the oath of office? Is that all we have to do? Or a move that we sign the oath of office?
Yeah.
I think Janet's going to issue the oath of office for some reason. That's the way that letter read.
Yes, it is. It did read that way.
He's a Justice of the Peace and they can administer oaths of office.
I second it.
Okay, so motion to sign the oath of office for our new police officer, who moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Steve DeLassio.
Aye.
Peggy Pashir.
Aye.
And Cheryl Mayberry. So we'll go ahead and sign that this weekend. Okay, so that is the end of new business. Is there any other new business or anything else to come before the Select Board? Seeing nothing else, we will is that we conclude this, our regular Select Board meeting? And we thank Fact TV for participating. And Ray, is there anything else you need to add? You're all set.
I'm fine. Thank you for involving me. And I look forward to being able to participate in doing the right thing for the entire community on the street.
Thanks, Brett. Thank you.
So that concludes our regular Select Board meeting at seven thirty-five PM.